Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, March 6th, 2025 Regular Planning Commission Meeting. It's seven o'clock and I call the meeting to order. Next up, we'll do a roll call. Samantha, please.
Michael Campbell.
Here.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Larry Heineig.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Amy Nichols.
Here.
Eddie Polk.
Here.
Bob Sherman.
Here.
Janice Farney.
Here.
Tim Stegman.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The agenda is approved. Item three, the Thursday, February 6th Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Thursday, February 6th Regular Meeting Minutes.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion or edits? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Meeting minutes for February are approved. Item four, public comment. Citizens in the audience may address the Planning Commission regarding items on the agenda for which there's no public hearing. And what do we have on our agenda? Signs zoning text amendments, short-term rental text amendments. Please state your name and address and you'll have five minutes.
Members of the board, Kathy Blackburn, my business address here in South Haven is 15 North Bailey, currently zoned waterfront business district. I currently reside out near Grand Junction. I'm actually the clerk of our Lee Township over in the area, so hello neighbors. I currently own, as I mentioned, the 15 North Bailey property. It is currently being used as a short-term rental, has been for about three and a half, sorry, two and a half years now. Part of the reason we bought in that particular area was because it was zoned as a business waterfront area and understanding there's been some fun contentions and, shall we say, lively debate about the overlays and the need and the mix, right, for short-term rentals. I totally understand that community sentiment and that's part of the reason why we bought in a business zoned area. So I'm here, I realized that as part of, I believe, a previous February meeting, the overlay that has been proposed excludes certain business zoned area. And so I would like to think that with some additional logic, we would be able to utilize our business, currently business zoned areas as part of that additional short-term rental overlay. If we don't want short-term rentals as part of residential zoned areas, awesome, great, totally understand that. I don't understand, however, though, for commercial zoned areas, why that that would be excluded from the short-term rental overlay. So if there are any, any questions for me, or is it?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Emily Westling. I'm a resident of Ward One. I live at 765 St. Joseph Street. I'm the General Manager of Anchor Point Vacations. I'm part of the South Haven Vacation Rental Alliance, as well as the Property Rights Coalition. I'm here tonight because I have some concerns about the zoning ordinance as written and I want to make a suggestion. My primary concern is that this version of the zoning ordinance strips away rights from existing short-term rental owners. I do understand the city's desire to enact new restrictions on future STRs, but I don't believe it's fair or legally sound to apply these changes retroactively to existing permit holders. As I'm sure you know, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act expressly protects lawful existing uses of property from subsequent zoning amendments. I believe that this ordinance, as currently written, attempts to strip existing STRs of their vested rights, which could put the city in legal jeopardy. A simple and fair solution is to include a grandfathering clause. I urge the Planning Commission to recommend adding language ensuring that property owners who have lawfully operated under previous ordinances are not unfairly penalized by regulatory changes. A previous version of the zoning ordinance that I know you all worked very hard on included a grandfathering provision, and I'm simply asking that the Commission restore this clause. It's my understanding that grandfathering provisions are pretty standard, and I think this would be a fairly simple and reasonable addition to this version of the zoning ordinance. I don't own an STR, but I work closely with homeowners in this industry, and I'm deeply concerned not only for them, but also for the broader economic impact of these changes. The city should not pass an ordinance that contradicts state law and invites potential lawsuits, which could place a significant financial burden on taxpayers. For the protection of homeowners and for the good of South Haven as a whole, I respectfully request that the Planning Commission recommend the inclusion of a grandfathering clause in the zoning ordinance governing short-term rentals. Thank you so much for your time.
Cindy Compton, 11340 Seventy-Sixth Street. I don't have a lot, I don't own a short-term rental. But I've been involved in the community, have some properties here, interested. And so I'm just wondering when I read through some of the text in this, that, and maybe you're going to clarify this when this goes to hearing, I don't know. But you can answer these questions later, but when it says, "Under currently registered STRs, but staff believes it makes the most practical sense not to attempt occupancy carve-outs under the new licensing scheme," who all is the staff? Is that one person? Is it five people? Is it the attorney? I'm just curious to know where that is. And then there are some ways to read this. It's confusing, or it's not reassuring. You don't really know when you're reading this, what the true intent is. And for instance, under overview, number two, it requires that all future STRs be located in a new STR overlay district. That just, future means new? Is that the same thing, future? Or is that in the future, all the STRs will be in the overlay district? Just a question on that. So I think it is nerve-wracking for people that have a lot at stake right now to read this because they're not really sure what the intent is. So that's just my, and even though you're not asked to officially review or act upon the licensing text, you can't because that's in the City Council, are they asking you to review it? Just wondering, because you're the Planning Commission and you spend a lot of time working on the planning according to the rules and regs of the state of Michigan. So just a few questions there. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Good evening. Dave Flack, 253 Hubbard Street. We own two rentals in town, my wife and I, and they're both outside of this overlay district that's been proposed. And I see the language, I've read the language. It says, "A license is unique to the licensee and the dwelling unit for which is issued, and it's not transferable. A license is revocable. Privilege granted by the city is not a property right." So I was concerned about this. I had written Mary a letter about our concerns because both our properties are outside of the overlay, which would probably impact our, the sale value of our homes if we ever went to sell them. And did receive a response from Kate that said, hey, we're still working on some language that says that, yeah, a license won't transfer because you're still not in the overlay zone, but whoever purchases your home will still be able to rent that property. So I guess I'm totally confused on where we are, and I just want to share my confusion, hope that we can gain some clarity here in the next coming days before something gets approved that we don't like. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. If there's nobody else in the audience, have the Planning Commission comment log. These date from the 8th of February up until today. So let's see, how many do I have? One, Twelve. So if I miss one that you guys received, let me know. First one, Julia Wood, rental owner requesting that existing STRs be considered an established grandfathered use. Mark Hamburg, rental owner requesting that existing short-term rentals be considered an established grandfathered use. And Jennifer Nigo, Nigo, same thing, rental owner requesting that existing short-term rentals be considered an established grandfathered use. Daryl Williams, future land use map designation for church-owned property. Elaine Herbert, short-term rental ordinance reform. Jim and Heather Winter, occupancy and enforcement for short-term rentals. Elaine Herbert, short-term rental regulations. Lisa Croupiers, concern about PC member conduct, which is where she chastised me. She didn't think I ran a good meeting. And again, opposition to mixed-use future land use designation. Elaine Herbert, short-term rental ordinance reform. Ann Helmer, rental owner requesting existing short-term rentals be established grandfathered. And Beth Diver, same thing. Did I miss any? I don't think so. Okay. Very good. That's the public comment portion. Next up, unfinished business actionable, we have none. New business actionable, we have none. Public comment, citizens in the audience may address the Planning Commission regarding items not on the agenda. Anything not on the agenda you'd like to speak about?
There was a question if it's actually streaming. Somebody just texted me and said that they weren't picking it up, but it could be an error from that person.
All right. And then we'll go to unfinished business. Discussion non-actionable, number six, temporary sign zoning text amendments. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the zoning ordinance review, the Planning Commission identified a few items to revisit for potential amendments, and one of them was signs, specifically non-permanent signs. And so we would like to begin that conversation tonight. I've got a chart that was in the packet that I will bring up, and these are the regulations that are in the current zoning ordinance for non-permanent signs, which are defined as any sign not permanently affixed to the ground that is capable of being moved from place to place. So as a reminder, we do not regulate content or messaging of the signs, but we can regulate placement size, height, that sort of thing. So currently, our regulations differ for commercial and residential lots, and over the past year or so, we've received comments from members of the public as well as the business community about these regulations. So you can see that on residential lots, the city currently permits up to four signs to be displayed at any given time, where non-residential lots, we permit only one. For residential lots, there is no time limit for display, but on non-residential lots, the permitted allowance is four times a year with no more than 30 days per display, with each display separated by at least 30 days. And this is something that comes up quite a bit from the business owners, especially when they're trying to hire. They find this regulation to be restrictive because they can't place signs up, the now hiring signs that you might see around. For location, on residential lots, we permit only ground-mounted commercial lots. They can be flat on a wall or ground-mounted. Size-wise, on residential lots, each sign cannot exceed six square feet. Commercial lots, the single sign can be up to 32 square feet, and the height differences are similar at six feet. So the goal for this evening is for you all to discuss these regulations as well as any potential changes that you might like to make moving forward. We would compile that into some ordinance text if you want to make changes and bring it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Anybody want to start?
I will, if nobody else wants to. I do know that one concern is there's no definition of permanent, and the definition of temporary is a bit challenging, some would say vague. I think the best example is the larger wooden signs on two-by-two or four-by-four wooden poles that are in the ground, and whether that really is temporary, just because they can wiggle and you can lift them out. It's not something that you can easily put in. You would have to dig the holes, most likely, with a pole digger. And if you just lifted it out, there would be probably a four-square-inch hole that someone could easily trip over. That is not something that seems like it is temporary. And so, and without permanent being defined, do you have guidance that you can provide on that aspect?
Mr. Chairman, I should have introduced Nathan Inks, who is here from the city's Attorney's Office and is available to help answer questions.
So I think under the current ordinance, without a definition of permanent, it would be anything that doesn't fall under the definition of non-permanent.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, is that signs that definitely look permanent and are up year-round, 365, rain, snow, sleet, sun, and are on four-by-four support legs, those certainly look permanent and not temporary. But if homeowner can wiggle it, it appears that it's temporary.
I think our office can look into some best practices on what other municipalities have done in terms of defining permanent versus temporary. I know that some municipalities have included a list of examples in how they define temporary or non-permanent signs. That would be one option that would help provide guidance. One of the difficulties there is then if you're relying solely on a list of examples, it creates room for confusion if you have a sign that's not included in that list of examples. So I think what our office would be looking for is guidance from the Planning Commission on what are the types of signs that you consider to be permanent, and what are the types of signs that you consider to be temporary. And once we understand what the Planning Commission wants in terms of that, you know, we can go forward with crafting a definition that fits what you're looking for.
So I think a temporary is definitely something that can easily be pushed into the ground, easily removed from the ground, and there's no footprint left of it having been there. I think something on wooden support beams that, you know, are two to four inches one side, so for, yeah, that seems much more sturdy and much more permanent. If they're pulled out of the ground, they would definitely leave an indentation because they would need to be X amount of distance, I would have to assume, into the ground in order to stay erect, or potentially cemented or something. And I would say if there's any material that is there to ensure that they stay there, well, then that's not temporary. But that is the type of thing. And I know that Kelly and Kate could definitely give you examples of the signs that have been at issue.
Yeah, we did go out there and look at a couple of signs, and, well, they didn't just wiggle, they pulled right out. So I guess that's when I look at what a temporary sign is, if it can be removed right on the spot, that kind of fulfilled what temporary was to me. So, and if there's some further definition of what temporary is, by all means, I think that's something that this ordinance should look at.
Well, and as I said, just because it can be pulled out does not mean it's temporary because if it leaves a footprint, a significant footprint of where it is, and the ground just does not go back to the original position, that seems more permanent to me because you have to physically change the ground to make it level and remove that.
Or you fill it with dirt and you put some grass seed on it. It's all depending on what you consider temporary versus permanent. Which if there's some additional, you know, definition or fleshing that out, I think that's perfect, you know, that's something to consider.
I think definitely the amount of depth that it would have to go into the ground to stay sturdy would be relevant. Putting grass seed on something that's just a quarter of an inch is significantly different than having to fill a four-to-six-inch hole that is required to make something stand upright, regardless of whether it's pulled out or not.
Yeah, so our office can look into best practices and perhaps some objective standards. I think one thing that the Planning Commission should keep in mind is if you introduce objective standards such as, you know, if the supports are greater in diameter than X number of inches, or if the sign is X number of inches in the ground, then you potentially open it up for if you regulate permanent and temporary signs differently, property owners coming very close to the line of what would be permanent or temporary. You know, if you have, say you define permanent signs as it goes into the ground six feet, and a property owner wants to avoid having their sign be considered permanent, well, then they only put it in the ground five inches. So that's something that I think Planning Commission should be aware of, is if you put in an objective standard like that based on the physical characteristics of either the supports or how deep they go, that opens up the ability for property owners and property users to change whether that sign is permanent or temporary. So just something to keep in mind, is that something that you would want to be a potential consequence of the definition of temporary or permanent?
Well, exactly. And I think weight and size and material are all relevant for that because of just the look and feel of it. I think that there, you know, we have the ordinances to avoid distraction of drivers. I mean, that's the whole reason they're not supposed to be in the curb lawn. You're not supposed to obstruct driving and being able to see pedestrians, and things like that. So looking at it from a safety perspective and looking at it from consistency, again, so, you know, these signs that are, you know, a foot or two square, flimsy, laminated on the standard, push in the ground, pull out of the ground, spikes that leave no indentation, I think we would all agree that those are temporary. Things that require a hole digger and have a certain diameter of material that is weather-resistant and, you know, two inches in diameter, that's a lot different. So I think it would be very helpful to have a definite, have options for objectivity of what is permanent and what is temporary.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely present some options for what other municipalities have done and give the Commission idea of what they could go with.
I'm also curious if you've done much with regard to signs. So our new ordinance is allowing businesses and homes with the ability to have signs. So I am concerned about all these signs popping up for businesses. And so the residential feel is affected by these commercial-type uses in our residential districts. Do you have any, have you worked on anything like that with regard to commercial uses in residential districts and limitations on those types of signages?
Yes. I mean, so under current law, municipalities have a greater ability to regulate commercial speech than they do non-commercial speech. Depending on how exactly you go about doing that would impact whether it's constitutional or not. But there is likely an ability for the city to regulate signs that are connected to a commercial use in a residential district, depending on how exactly it's done.
I would be interested in learning about that.
Yep, we can do that as well.
That's what I had.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. We have had some public members that have talked about having too few signs being able to be put in their yard. So it might be useful for us to discuss whether we would like to increase the number from four to something else that would address the concerns of the public who would like to have more than four signs in their yard. So that would be one thing to consider. The other, the other question that I have, I guess, if you can answer it, is if we were to change sign ordinances and so forth, and let's just use the, you know, the signs that Commissioner Hosley has talked about, you know, that are more, probably more commercial in nature. So if we were to change the rules with respect to signs, then those signs that are existing currently under a new ordinance, would they be considered non-conforming uses and they would stay anyway?
If, right, if they are a lawful non-conforming use, then they would fall under the lawful non-conforming use provisions of the zoning ordinance, yes.
Those are my comments.
I just have a question. So Kelly, you said that the time limit for the commercial, people are finding too constrictive. Where did we come up with this? This is kind of an, it seems to be four times a year, no more than 30 days per display, with each display separated by at least 30 days. Like, who can even keep track of that, let alone enforce it?
I'm not sure. This regulation predates me. I don't know, Kate, if you remember the reason behind that, or the chairman, maybe?
I don't. I do know that we've done a lot of site visits and talking to local businesses, and one thing they have consistently said is that, you know, we've, we're looking for people, and we are restricted by what signage we can put outside. And this community really has very strong feelings about the flappy flag signs, but that's usually the signage that people like to put out in front of their business when they're trying to hire people. And when you have a number of businesses that are looking for people, and we've heard from people that there are no jobs here, but when you hear the businesses, we've got jobs, we just can't find the people. It's a really, it's a disconnect, and that should be something we can discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, I was on planning.
Oh, Clark knows.
And I don't have an answer for you. I don't think it was a concern at that time. I don't think anyone came to us and said, hey, we, you know, we're trying to hire now and we'd like to have one for three months. Then again, you know, unless it's reported, sometimes that slips through. I can't give you any reason why we came up with that.
Cut and paste.
It potentially.
Borrowed from somewhere else.
Could have been, or it could have been from the previous sign ordinance. I think what we tried to do is create a grid this time through and make it easy. And because of the nature of what you And because of the nature of what you can and can't put on a sign, and, you know, we went with neutral verbiage, I think the time, place, location, size was really easy for us. So it did actually help condense that really large sign area, but I couldn't tell you why we came up with that. I think what we have is really pretty unique. I think it's easily to determine. Having some, I guess, other definitions of permanent might help us in our decision-making. I'm not sure if we would use them, but I think, you know, defining permanent may help us with temporary, or having an understanding if we feel like we're in a good spot. I've seen some four by four signs that are buried, and I've seen four by four signs that actually had stakes in the bottom, and they just pop out and don't even know that they were there. So it's really hard to determine, you know, what's permanent and what's temporary. So maybe having some of these suggestions might be beneficial.
I'd agree with that, and we see more and more commonly, realtors, for example, with for sale signs. We'll take a four by four post, to your point, Mary, and a post hole digger, and they'll put that, whatever, six, eight, or more inches into the ground. But then the house might sell in a week or a month or whatever, and they come back and they take their sign. So it's hard to say that's a permanent sign, in my opinion. And the peril, if you will, especially in some neighbors, neighbors maybe closer to lake, wind is a factor. And if you've got a fairly, I'll call it flimsy sign that's stuck in the ground on a wire frame, that wind could take that right down the street in a heartbeat. So the need to have a sign that's more secure might give it the appearance of permanence, but it isn't really permanence. And I think you need to consider a time component. If the sign is there for a week or a month, hard to consider that a permanent sign, in my opinion. And again, merchants, vendors, whatever, may be concerned about the security of their signs. They don't want a sign that's easily removed and pulled out, and that's been a case with some campaign signs, for example, where opponents of an issue or a candidate have ripped signs out of the ground and thrown them away. So it's really a difficult thing to define what really is permanent, what's temporary. But the fact that it's on a four by four post that's eight inches in the ground, in my opinion, does not make it a permanent sign.
I agree.
Have we heard from Eddie? Anything?
Guess gathering information.
Okay. Larry? Janus?
I don't have any answer to the definition of permanent. I guess I'd like to see something that's fairly simple, however. A brief description that everybody can understand. I certainly don't want to get involved in types of material or size or depth, although I do have a little experience with those. If you've seen the overhead signs on freeways. But as far as the commercial concerns about having to take a break and take their signs in for 30 days, I was on the Planning Commission when we did this last time also, and for the life of me, I can't think of any reason to maintain that.
Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something, like there was some big reason and I didn't know it.
I've been trying to think of what we might be missing, and I would recommend taking that out in the future.
I appreciate some of the suggestions from other places. I think that will help us clarify what we're looking for. Chairman? Just have a comment on the commercial signs. So yes, if the signs are with regard to hiring, I think a much more lenient ordinance is warranted. But if it's for other items, you know, campaigns, things like that, that's where I think we should have more control for the content base for a commercial property. You know, I have no problem letting them advertise their, you know, neat job openings, advertising special events. But some, I think we need to be careful that we don't, that commercial properties don't become just a location for multiple political signs. I think that that detracts from our city, especially in the commercial district, is more destructive and that in the residential areas, they're more spaced out. But in the business districts, generally a higher speed limit, more condensed. So I would like to make sure that we balance that. And you've even said that we have more leeway with regard to commercial type areas.
Just to clarify, you have more leeway with respect to commercial speech, but if you're distinguishing between commercial speech and non-commercial speech on commercial property and restricting non-commercial speech more than you restrict commercial speech, that would likely not be allowed. The Supreme Court has typically given more protection to non-commercial speech than it does commercial speech. So you may be able to regulate some commercial speech more strictly than non-commercial speech, but you typically wouldn't be able to regulate non-commercial speech more strictly than you regulate commercial speech.
Even on commercial areas in high-speed areas or higher speed?
Correct. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't restrict all speech in general.
Or the number of signs in general for a commercial lot on a street of X miles per hour.
Right, so if you have a commercial, if you have, you know, a commercial district that's in a high-traffic area, you would be able to restrict all speech in that area, and you would, you know, potentially give the basis of there are heightened traffic concerns in this area, that's a valid reason to restrict speech in general. But you wouldn't be able to target it based on the content of that speech.
So I would definitely be interested in that aspect. So we could potentially have, for commercial purposes, have fewer signs allowed on commercial because of the distraction, especially in the higher traffic area versus a residential. So we could, if we didn't want to restrict time, we could restrict the number. So we could say four in residential, but two in commercial.
Right, and I think the best approach there would be to do that by the underlying zoning district rather than use, because if the concern is traffic, that's going to be typically driven by the nature of the district itself as a whole more broadly than a specific use on a specific property. But just for going forward, are there specific zoning districts that you had in mind where you might want to see this?
Well, I just know, like, Phoenix, Broadway, Broadway where it turns to Dyke Men, goes to Conjur. I mean, those are some busy streets, especially in the summer. And there's also some odd angled roads, so you would definitely want to keep them less cluttered.
Okay, we can present some options for that.
Thank you.
Anything else? I guess it's my turn. So for me, less taxed is better. I don't need a big ordinance. What Mike had mentioned about actual quantities, I could care less about that. We could do square footage, that's fine by me. I really don't care how many signs are on a commercial building. The one thing that is distracting, though, could be the neon lit ones that blink, and I think we've talked about that before. Some of those kinds of signs, I think, could be muted a little bit, but other than that, just painted signs, I don't have a big deal, big issue with. That's it for me. Is that enough information for you to go on?
Chairman?
Yes?
So for size, could we have a maximum size so that, like, not one sign is the whole maximum sign, especially in residential?
Could be. Could do a maximum square footage with infinite numbers of signs off of that maximum number, or one great big sign.
Well, that's the thing, I just, because of distraction and some of the yards and that, I would be cautious about having a square footage maximum, regardless of the number of signs, without some restriction for the largest possible sign in that calculation.
Somebody might have something really important they want to message, though.
And if that is the case, I would also like you to provide examples of distance from right-of-way, so it's not obstructing site traffic.
I believe that is, and with the driveways, you have to have, it's included with part of the landscaping, is the cone of vision. It's both in the right-of-way and the lot driveway, isn't it, Larry?
Clear vision.
Yeah. So I think that's covered already.
I'm not sure it would be covered for temporary signs, would be my concern.
You can't have anything that blocks landscaping or structure.
Nothing taller than 30 inches or 33 inches, I don't remember off the top of my head, but, so it could be placed there as long as it was short enough.
Okay.
But on the other side of the sidewalk, that city property, and we're not allowed to have any?
Correct, signs are not permitted in the municipal right-of-way unless they've been permitted to be placed as a part of a special event that was approved by the city council.
And I asked our old police chief before if we could write an ordinance to allow anybody to take a sign out of the parkway, and she didn't think that was a good idea, to empower citizens just to remove those.
I would tend to agree.
I kind of listened to her.
The code enforcement officer, however, is empowered to remove signs from the municipal right-of-way.
Sure is.
Which you have an unfunded mandate to maintain.
That's true.
All right. Do you have enough information from this short discussion?
Yes, thank you. We'll bring something back for your review.
Very nice. Are you staying for the next item, or?
I think he's just keeping the seat warm.
I am not. I'm gonna make the drive back to Sterling Heights.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for getting me out early.
Tag team event here, huh?
New firm.
Same firm.
Same firm, okay. All right, new business, discussion, non-actionable, short-term rental zoning text amendments. Kelly?
Thank you. All right, as we're all aware, the-
And we're on page?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Okay. My packet's struggling, okay. I can bring it up if you need me to. Okay, so the city council has been working to draft revised short-term rental regulations, and the most recent regulations were reviewed at city council on February 17th, and the council voted to send the zoning text to you all, the Planning Commission, for review. As the planning, or as rather, the council discussed at their meeting, the regulations are intended to be an 80% solution, and council members are hoping for an efficient review process. So with that in mind, the packet for this evening contains both the proposed regulatory code and zoning text, really in an effort to give you all a big picture of the new STR program. The regulatory code is a draft, it's base, and based on input that was received on the 17th, we know there will be changes made to this document. The Planning Commission is not being asked to review this text or send a recommendation back to council, so we're not going to spend time tonight discussing the code language. We will be discussing the proposed zoning amendments, and so I can give you a brief highlight of that information, and then we can discuss any specific items or questions that you might have. We've got Dave Everly from the city attorney's office, we've got Kate Hojer, the city manager, here with us, so we've brought out all the big hitters tonight. So if you don't have any immediate questions, I'll just give an overview and then we can-
Yes.
Okay. So the most significant changes to the zoning ordinance include the following. And I'm not going to read directly from this memo because you all have it in your packet, and this-
Just give us a snapshot.
Text on the screen is tiny. So business and personal short-term rental designations are no more. Property owners will now obtain either a Class 1 license, which is the old business certificate that would allow unlimited rental, or a Class 2 license, which is the former personal rental that allowed rentals of 28 days or less. So the basic premise of the two types is the same, but the terminology is different. The current sections in the zoning ordinance that regulate short-term rentals will be deleted, and existing lawfully established rentals will become lawful, non-conforming uses rather than permitted uses in each of the districts. So existing short-term rentals continue to have the right to get registered and rent their properties, it's just that, again, in the zoning ordinance, each district chapter no longer lists short-term rentals as permitted uses. New short-term rentals will be permitted, but only to be issued in a new overlay district that includes the Central Business District, the R1C or Monroe Park District, portions of the B3, the Harbor Club PUD, and portions of the Trailside or Everett Park PUD. So there is no longer an exempt, non-exempt status, there's no longer an exempt properties list. New short-term rentals can only be issued if they're part of that overlay, in the overlay district area, and only if they receive a special land use permit from the Planning Commission. So it becomes a special land use process. All rental properties must also receive a zoning compliance determination from the zoning administrator's office before obtaining a rental license. And then we also have some parking requirements, specific to short-term rentals, that are similar to the underlying zoning requirements. So I know that was quick, but I know you've also all done your homework, so I don't want to belabor any of the points, and I want to give you a chance to ask whatever questions that you have.
Okay. Was there anything you wanted to add, or the attorney?
If I may, thank you for asking. We did have a question about the transferability, and I did email out a number of responses, and what I wrote was that my understanding of new regulations is that the transferability will work much the same way as it does now. The license itself cannot transfer to a new property owner, but the right to rent does, assuming compliance, good standing. If a rental property sells, the new owners need to submit the appropriate paperwork to register the rental in their name. The zoning use, i.e. the vested right to rent, is not terminated with the sale. The ability to rent without a valid permit is limited until the new owner registers the rental provided in the ordinance. So that's how transferability works now and how it will work in the future, if that helps clarify.
I think that's a pretty good summary, Mr. Chairman, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Just wanted to see if you had anything to add at this time. Okay, who's first?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I have some questions and then some comments as well. Just as, in terms of opening comments, I think the approach that has been taken by the city council with respect to the zoning ordinance is actually a good one. I believe that they have finally revealed the goals that they had in terms of trying to reform the existing ordinances, and so they have moved governance from zoning to regulatory. I think that they chose to use an overlay district in the zoning ordinance as a way to recognize that there is a historically tourist area of town where STRs have been for many years and that should continue to do so. I guess I would raise a question that was also raised by an audience member of whether or not we can discuss how that overlay- of whether or not we can discuss how that overlay district boundary was determined, given that it apparently does not include all business districts. I think that um this approach that they took then preserves the remainder of the residential areas from any additional uh STRs being licensed there. I guess in terms of questions. So all existing STRs in areas outside of the overlay district are going to be considered lawful, non-conforming uses. Any new STR that's in the overlay district is going to be considered a special land use. So what are we gonna call the existing STRs in the overlay district? Are they going to be also lawful, non-conforming, or is there a different name that they'll have?
So if they don't get special land use, they're still technically lawful, non-conforming. Cause the only way you could be a lawful, short-term rental under the new zoning ordinance would be as special land use. So they don't, they're in the district, but they don't have special land use. So they're still technically lawful, non-conforming. Now, for example, you had what had previously been called a personal STR and it was in, located in the zoning overlay district. If they just got a license based off their lawful, non-conforming status, they'd be limited to that class two permit. But they could go, they could go get special land use approval, provided they met all the requirements. And then they'd be eligible for that class one permit where they could rent, you know, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. But now, as a practical matter, there's probably some existing STRs in the overlay district who may not be able to meet the special land use requirement. So they may be stuck as lawful, non-conforming, excuse me.
Okay. Another question you might want to answer. The, the definition of short-term rental is different between zoning and regulatory. Is there a specific reason why we would define the same term differently? And it's not something you have to answer tonight. It's just, just a, something to point out. I mean, I recall that.
Yeah, I think the goal was to get the definitions pretty close, but understanding that one is trying to regulate a, a broader use and one is trying to regulate a certain type of activity. That there might be some, some nuance to the definitions. But I think especially in later drafts of the licensing, one, the definitions have come much closer.
Okay. Then on the zoning compliance determination, I know Kelly mentioned that that was defined in the zoning ordinance. And then she also mentioned, so I'll take advantage of the fact that she brought in the regulatory ordinance. She said that a zoning ordinance, or zoning compliance determination needs to be done on each property. Just a couple of questions there. Is it the intent of the zoning compliance determination that's part of the regulatory ordinance, that it is done on every property that is being relicensed after the enactment of the, of the new ordinances? As in all the non-lawful, non-conforming ones, as well as anything that's new in the overlay district? This zoning compliance determination is to be done on all of them?
Correct.
Okay. And then on the first one that is done after the enactment of the ordinance, is that intended, as I read it, is that intended for them to go back to, as was discussed in a previous version of the ordinance, to go back to the beginning of when they were licensed to follow the trail? To see if they are in fact lawfully compliant?
Yeah, uh as the commission received from Williams and Works, they noted that there's a very similar, there's a much similarity between what's currently have as a zoning permit and then this new zoning compliance determination. The reason for the zoning compliance determination was it looking at the definition of a zoning permit. That seems to be authorizing action moving forward, like putting in a fence, putting up a shed, something like that. And we wanted something that allowed the zoning administrator to look back and then to make a determination regarding lawfulness. Uh then more specifically to your question, yes, that would be the mechanism by which the zoning administrator would look and say, yes, you are lawful, non-conforming. No, you're not lawful, non-conforming. In the, you know, it, it's, it's, it's phrased to be used in other contexts too. So if there's somebody who has a question is about a conforming or non-conforming structure, it could be used there too.
Right.
Practically for this conversation, the question's gonna be, are you a lawful, non-conforming STR or not? And that determination would be made by the zoning administrator as part of the administration of the zoning ordinance. So that decision could be appealed to the ZBA, whatever. But the rental inspector, who may or may not be the same person, right? They, that's the, that is the green light from zoning that authorizes you to now proceed with your licensing. So we tried to keep as much under zoning as possible in that regard, understanding that you still had to get the thumbs up on the zoning side to come over to the licensing side.
So given that the licenses are now going to be good for two years, that ZCD would, would be done again, two years from now, but the job would be less because they've already done it? Or is it not, is it not done except for the first time?
Yeah, as a, as a practical matter, it's gonna stay, that, that determination would stay in the file.
Okay, thank you. Abandonment. I know that that had been discussed and it's a very subjective and very fact-based and getting into the head of the person who supposedly is abandoning the property. However, it, in the, in the ordinance, would it be possible to have something that would, you know, codify any, any items that would suggest that abandonment is being occur, occurring based on what courts have already determined as being abandoned behavior? And that way, it would not only provide a basis for everyone to understand, but it would also tell the owner, okay, you know, I'm, I'm doing these things. I better do something. Otherwise, I might be looking at an abandonment issue.
Yes, and the current zoning ordinance does that in the, in the broader scope. So the thought was that there's no reason to call out, to call out specifically abandonment in the context of a, of a short-term rental when we already have provisions in the zoning ordinance that put flesh on the bones of the term abandonment in every context for every use.
Okay. And then it, I don't know if we'll get to the comments based on what the audience has talked about in terms of grandfathering. I have some of those as well, but I'll wait to see if that topic even comes up. So I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Who, who'd like to speak next?
I have a question regarding the first paragraph on page sixteen on the overview. It discusses uh some of the exceptions um for short-term rentals. And I noticed that hotels and motels are listed, but I don't see resorts. And I was wondering if there was a reason that resorts was eliminated or it should be included.
Let me look at the definition real quick.
Okay.
I think that was probably just an oversight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I appreciate the assistance on the lawful, non-conforming use. Mike had asked that question and, and I think you helped with that understanding. But at the same time, I'm not quite sure how that's going to be developed. And I, and I say that from the standpoint, and I think you had mentioned that many times in one of the meetings about how much risk that we were gonna take on with this because of the vested right. And, you know, it's the risk analysis that I'm looking at on any takings clauses of someone that's currently an STR today. Because I know the MML is not gonna ensure us on a, those types of taking clauses. So I'm not sure what, you know, potentially could be out there. So it's that not, that lawful, non-conforming use. What would make a property a not lawfully, non-conforming? What, what would make them no longer have that ability to have their license?
There, there's multiple fact patterns that could result in that. But as a broad stroke, the analysis goes, was the use established? Was it established in accordance with the regulations, you know, the zoning ordinance at the time when it was established? And the next question is whether or not it was abandoned. I don't know if it's helpful or not, but the zoning ordinance already speaks largely to, you know, not only abandonment, but lawful, non-conformities. And I think sometimes when we get very focused on, you know, short-term rentals, we forget that short-term rentals are operating and that the provisions of the ordinance regarding short-term rentals are operating within the broader zoning ordinance. And we, we do this for all, all sorts of other uses. We would just be applying the same rules to different facts. And it, when we think about it that way, I think it tends to become less, less of a big deal. Cause it's like, oh, we do this all the time. We don't, we don't have, it's nothing special. This happens all the time. Now, I think some of the confusion for members of the public may be that previous drafts of zoning ordinances called out specifically, you are grandfathered if A, B, C, and D. And this draft of the zoning ordinance kicks back to the broader concepts in the zoning ordinance. And we're not calling it out explicitly because it's a practical matter. We don't have to. There's other provisions of the zoning ordinance that are already there that address lawful, non-conformities. And they would apply to short-term rentals, just like they would apply to any other use being debated.
Okay, so what would a good example be? I'm still not sure about, you know, a home that we would say, you are no longer lawful, non-conforming use. I mean, what would be an example that would prevent that from happening? That's, just on a hypothetical, what would that be for someone?
So I think in the context of short-term rentals, this comes up with parking, right? It's something that we've talked a considerable amount about. And in the twenty eighteen ordinance, a parking requirement was instituted that um in single-family residential neighborhoods, parking requirement for, for single-family residential homes is, starts at two for any house of three bedrooms or less. And then one additional parking space is needed for each bedroom. And so I could envision a situation where a short-term rental might not have enough parking.
Okay, so, but that would just change their occupancy. That wouldn't necessarily change their non-conforming use to lose a license, right?
What, I think if, if, if at the time there was a requirement that you had parking and you, in addition to many other requirements to establish this use, and you started renting it out as an arguably permitted use, but you weren't satisfying all these requirements that were in existence at the time, then you wouldn't have lawfully established that use.
Okay, so when your license was provided, we weren't inspecting a home. I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, to get, make that leap. Cause now I know, you know, we've had for a while where you have to show how many parking spaces you have and bedrooms, you know, that you have. So from there, we developed a, a two per bedroom plus two per floor, maximum capacity. And then you were issued a license. So you said there was probably a period of time when that wasn't happening? Like, let's say two thousand and eighteen, somebody got a license. What, what would make them non-conforming now because of something that happened in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen? I'm still not sure.
I think the argument would be if, if the license, if you started renting in two thousand and nineteen, but did not have adequate parking, then perhaps an argument is made that the use wasn't lawfully established.
Okay.
And it would be case by case, I would, that we would look at.
Yeah, that case by case. I just didn't know they got it based on parking, but did we not have a parking then? Is that what we meant, that the parking came later?
Well, I think, you know, I can't speak for, you know, I wasn't here in two thousand and nineteen. And I can't speak for the decisions that were made in two thousand and nineteen. But I think that this zoning compliance determination will have us reexamining those decisions to some extent.
Okay, I, I was just wondered, cause everybody got licenses at some point recently. And I thought they went through the analysis of what was required to get that license. So I'm just wondering if someone was required to do something in two thousand and twenty-two. They passed those requirements. We gave them a license, but then we find out that their original license in two thousand and nineteen is preventing them from having one today. Just trying to figure out what that could be. Okay. The overlay, we don't have a visual overlay yet.
Yes, we do.
We do.
It's in the packet, it's in the packet and I can.
And I'm sorry.
You really gotta, you really gotta zoom in.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we can play, you know, we've, we've had a couple of different greens on the overlay and maybe we don't quite have the right green yet.
Not for a projector.
So the overlay are the little green pieces.
Right, so we can see the overlay here around the Harbor Club. And then I'll start here, uh near the river and I'm going north and following the screen line around. I don't, I don't have the pointer, sorry. And then I'm coming around this RM one zone district here on the north side, around the lake. And here's the R one C back along the river, swooping south around the central business district. And really just enclosing the central business district there.
And then Trailside.
Oh, yeah, thank you. And then a little bit of Trailside here to the south.
And Trailside, okay.
Well, and not all of Trailside, the northern half where the phases have already been approved.
Okay. Okay, I apologize that. Thank you. Cause we said there were some longstanding areas of places that had had that. I just remember about thirty-five years ago, there were a lot of homes in the South Beach area in the zero and one hundred block that were short-term rentals also. So I just didn't know. Thank you for that. And that makes more sense. Another question, short-term rental in an attached, single-family dwelling versus a short-term rental in a detached, single-family dwelling. What's the difference between an attached, single-family dwelling and a detached, single-family dwelling? Cause then there was also the multifamily.
Yeah.
So was that just for threes? Cause we also had the duplex.
A duplex could be an attached, uh, single-family.
Yes.
That is an attached, single-family, but the duplex is actually called out. So I just, and with the multi and the single, so I wasn't sure if a, an attached, single-family dwelling was for three.
What definition are you looking at?
When we were looking at parking.
Parking.
Oh, okay.
And actually, both of those equate to the exact same number of required parking spaces. It's just one starts lower, but they both get there at three bedrooms. It's just that I'm not sure, do we need an attached, single-family dwelling and a detached, single-family dwelling? What's the difference in the attached and the detached on a single family? Cause we also talk about multi and we also talk about duplex.
Right.
The goal was to recognize that short-term rentals can occur in the multiple different types of dwellings that you have. And then to list all of those out.
Okay.
Now, you know, we may be, we may be missing a type there, but that was the intent.
Okay.
I looked at the definition of dwellings and then all the different types under there and we just pulled those down.
Okay.
And, and one key thing is not to confuse the short-term rental um above another commercial use. So the CBD is specifically addressed separately where parking is not required because that's the current requirement. So the short-term rental above another commercial use does not apply to the CBB parking area.
And I think the parking aligns with where we were going earlier, which does help with number of bedrooms and occupancy. And I think that really, uh, because that's what we look for in, in housing going forward, when we went forward that. And I think that is another, that's another positive that has come forward. Okay. Those are my questions for now.
Could I go back for a second to the, Kelly, if you could get that overlay district slide back? And this may be outside the realm of our comments, but it seems so capricious. For example, and it's hard to zoom in and see, but if you could see Black River Street, the condominium's on the east. the condominiums on the east side of Black River are in the overlay district. But there are also condominiums on the west side of Black River that are not. I guess just curious how that came to be. And on, you know, if you look at North Shore Drive, the Cannery Row condominium, Sandpiper, which is basically Dykman and North Shore Drive, and everything south, all the condominium developments in there, Harbors and so on, they're all in the overlay district. But then there are others further north on North Shore Drive. One on like Oak Mary, I always forget the name of the one there at Oak and North Shore, and then the one at North Shore and Baseline, which I believe is in the city. Those are not in the overlay district. And I thought maybe we were trying to get all the condominiums in the overlay district, no? But there was the excluded concept, and anyway, it was just kind of arbitrary and maybe capricious, and maybe I just wasn't there, so I don't know exactly the logic that went into it all.
So my understanding is I don't think there's hardly any short-term rentals in those attached condos. But I think one goal, and Dave, you could help out, is we were trying to define a contiguous area. And you couldn't get those without going through the R1A, R1B areas that we were trying to avoid.
And I assure you, with the level of debate and compromise that occurred, it was far from arbitrary and capricious. A lot of thought went into crafting that overlay district, both in consideration of what, where short-term rentals are, what the future land use map is, where development wants to be encouraged, and then trying to, to the extent practical, maintain, keep, not cut districts in half unless there's a justification for it.
And Kelly, can you slide the map up?
Wait, don't go anywhere yet. I can speak to, I think, the condos at Oak Street Beach in North Shore Drive, only because I spend, that's my beach, that's where I spend all my time. There's never anybody there, so they can't be a short-term rental. And maybe they'd be doing a much better job, or they're the world's worst short-term rental. I don't know. There's hardly anybody there. When you look at, like down Brockway, all three of those subdivisions, we all have homeowners' associations that refuse, you know, that we're not allowed to do short-term rentals. So I'm wondering how much of that, you know, was factored in as well? Like, you know, oh, those guys, they took care of it themselves. We don't need to worry about it, or put them in the overlay district and let them.
I know, I know you're right that some of the HOAs simply won't allow that.
Yep.
But for example, I think it was Monday's meeting, an HOA rep from North Shore Condominiums spoke and said they've got like 83, I think, units in there.
And they're in the overlay.
I know they are, I know they are. And I think she said about 40 of them are STRs and 40 are not. But all of them could become, going through the special land use process.
Well, and I spoke with people there, and I actually spoke with her. I really did try to identify areas that definitely wanted to be in the overlay and brought that into the.
And I wondered how the special land use application would work. So picture North Shore Condominiums and somebody that is in there but doesn't currently have a permit or license. Now wants to be, they would have to apply for a special land use and meet all those requirements, including a site plan and a narrative describing how they are compliant with the special land use requirements. And then that would be repeated for each unit in there potentially? Certainly, we wouldn't ask each of them to come up with a site plan. It would be exactly the same site plan, would it not? I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the comments that the Williams Works have made is when you do special land use, it is somewhat of a labor-intensive proposition. The Planning Commission being the one who's going to have to deal with all that, you know, obviously, you're more than welcome to make any suggestions moving forward. I'll defer to Mary in terms of where she thinks the City Commission is on special land use versus site plan review. But at least in the workshop, I think the thought was, at least for now, site plan review gives the city the most oversight. And given the contentious level of the issue, maybe we'll start there.
Well, I wouldn't really say contentious issue. It's just, I think we went with the special land use because some of these areas are used to having insufficient parking. They didn't have a parking requirement. The PUDs did not have to have a parking requirement. They were excluded. And so this allows people to find out, and not all of the units have the same amount of parking. So that's why a site plan would not necessarily be the same for all of them. I know that Harbor Club has implemented parking areas. So depending on how close you are to the parking area, that may be a reason not to have to have, you know, how they meet their parking requirements. So I think the special land use is to allow us to identify a path forward, and it can always be amended.
And Williams on Works does make a very good point. We could possibly be spending a lot of time considering special land use applications right here from the potential new STR licenses issued in the overlay district.
Yeah, we're not going to give it the kind of review we normally give it. One question, what was your name again?
Kathy Blackford.
Kathy, could you come up to Kelly's computer and point to her the property you were concerned about?
Sure, yeah.
It's North Bailey, so it's.
And then could you blow that up, Kelly? Kind of circle it with your mouse.
So, well.
It smacked up between two overlays where the B3 doesn't connect. It's on the south side of the river, where the Miditer Marina and the Riverbend Boat Club. We are smacked up between two.
I just, I want to see how it looks on this overlay map. Because what I'm understanding is you wanted contiguous, so you had to skip around. But why this particular property is excluded?
So we're, essentially where that black outline is.
Yes.
My house is in that little tiny black outline on the south side of the river.
So the overlay zone does not go south of the river right there. It really is located just adjacent to Dykman, so north and south of, I'm sorry, just north of Dykman. So there's really nothing that's being added into on the B3, on your Dunkley or down Bailey Avenue. What you do see is the overlay that's coming down Kentucky, and is just for that kind of, that development that's there.
Harbor Club.
Harbor Club, yes. It doesn't include the Marina there or any of the condos to the east of Kentucky as well.
And it's residential on a commercially zoned piece?
Yeah.
And it's next to an area there, that yellow piece in the lower right. That's so popular, people are dying to get.
Oh, Clark. That was bad.
But Kelly, I thought you had mentioned with the business district, really discussions around that had really been more hotels and things like that as opposed to residential dwellings that could be short-term rentals.
That was what the zoning committee discussed, was maintaining the business use in the waterfront business district.
And that's what I had recalled when we were discussing the overlay.
Does that accomplish it or not?
One final note, there are three brand-new condos going in on that peninsula, and there are plans.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Is it accomplished?
Like I said, that is what we were discussing. And so, Kelly, if you can move it, so the left side is further on. There we go.
I can zoom out a little bit if that's helpful.
You know, but like I said, I think the focus was looking at what is B3 and what is its intended purpose.
We definitely need a clear map to give to the public for next round. This one's awful.
Okay.
It's a little busy. This is the zoning map.
Oh, I get it. I mean, there's so much going on.
We can take off some of the layers on it, so you're really just looking at zoning districts and the overlay district, just for the purpose of discussion.
Because it just makes it confusing.
I think it's all the lines. We can do that.
All right, and who else needs to chime in here that hasn't already?
Just have a question about, so all of these lawfully nonconforming are now, wait a minute, I just lost my spot, now going to have to reapply? And in 180 days, we're going to have all of these done? Are we hiring an army to do this? How are we doing this?
What do you, can you clarify what you mean when you say apply?
Sure, so currently registered STRs that are lawfully nonconforming, they have, like, they're current for a year, but you can renew it unless it expires within the 180-day window following the adoption.
That's, that's out.
There's a lot of work being done.
That's the licensing part, and that's been, that's in the works. That currently is no longer existing.
I do not need to stress that Kelly's going to have a coronary when she has to do all this.
David.
Yeah, there's discussion, the discussion at council right now is, how do we phase these over? And how do, on the licensing side? And how do we do it in a way that recognizes that there are changes in the rules? And short-term rentals tend to get rented out so many months. And we want to make, we want to try to avoid changes where there's already been a booking. But we also understand we can't just leave the old program hanging out there forever. So that's, that's the discussion council's having in terms of how to thread that needle. In addition to consideration of, is there a way we can build in some trickle effect? So Kelly doesn't lose her mind.
So I'm assuming you're talking about the change now from 16 to 12.
Well, no, so my, well, so what I was like, what I had suggested is not more than 12. Because one version, the version before us on Monday had it up to September 2026. And I thought that was too far.
I meant occupancy. I were addressing.
Oh, sorry.
Addressing the occupancy change.
Well, no, so you, about the trickle effect, the current, I'm sorry, the current license they would have, I think they're able to continue that until it expires. So that's how, they would not all have to be within a certain amount of time of the effective date.
Okay, good.
And I just want to comment where it says the 80%, and then something like this comes along, and I'm thinking, hmm, maybe it's 76% now.
Yeah.
And I almost wonder if it came here a little early. But it's just a comment, we'll keep moving on. But every time something like that comes up, I think this isn't ready.
Yeah, Chairman.
In a long shot.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my comments, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
What else?
I'm still a little bit confused, and maybe I'm just slow.
You have spoken, and I will let you speak again.
Excuse me.
But I want to, anybody who hasn't spoken.
Understand.
Their chance to go, and that leaves you, Eddie, on that side.
Yes, sir.
And Larry and Janice and.
I really did.
Oh, you did. Mary and Larry on this side.
And my comment is still the same. I'm just listening, gathering information.
Excellent. Okay, Larry?
I like what's on the table because it's simpler, going to be easier to understand and easier to administer. But I do have some concerns. I have a neighbor who grew up in this town, moved out to Colorado, bought the house in my neighborhood, and is using it as a short-term rental so that he can have it paid off, meet the taxes between now and when he retires, to move back here in his retirement. His folks did that same thing, and people have been doing that in South Haven for decades. But next year, we're going to have very limited space in which to do that. In fact, I envision that we probably won't see very few new short-term rentals except in the Central Business District in the next few years. Now, I believe the reason for that is that members of the City Council wanted, some of them wanted to limit short-term rentals, others wanted to eliminate short-term rentals. I think they've accomplished it with this overlay zone. I don't have any proposals to suggest, just my observation.
Okay, Mary?
Sure, thanks. For the zoning compliance, my understanding is it would be done just the first time. But if there were any modifications, it would probably, might need to be redone. So realistically, it's done once and.
Yeah, and I think to your point, Mary, if you're a lawful, nonconforming use, there's a lot that goes into that, right? Like, what is the scope of your lawful, nonconformity?
Right, so you cannot enlarge it.
Right, so presumably, that zoning compliance determination would say, yes, you are a lawful, nonconforming use. And then there would be some language in there explaining the scope of your lawful, nonconforming use. So that if down the road, you start coming in and say, hey, I want to add on, or like, if you want to be a short-term rental, you can't add on. If you don't want to be a short-term rental anymore, and it's within the zoning, go for it. But you can't expand your use. And part of that zoning compliance determination will be documenting that scope of your lawful, nonconformity, so there's no questions later.
And I know parking has been an issue, and I would, I'm looking for clarity before this starts because I know that as of even the 2016 ordinance, the regulatory ordinance 10-244G says that unit has to be zoning compliant. And so there were parking requirements way back to 2016. I think that there's been a misunderstanding about when parking was and was not required. And the 2016 ordinance clearly says zoning compliance is required, which does include parking. For abandonment, so the current ordinance 2030, a section of it keeps getting, and I thought I had it up here, here we go, keeps getting passed over in that it actually spoke of abandonment. And so, sorry, I thought I had it up, but I had moved the page or something else. There we go. So, under the established grandfather zoning use, it says the use, short-term rental business unit shall be considered an established zoning use that may continue to exist on the zoning lot unless and until the short-term rental registration, one lapses, or two, is revoked pursuant to Code 10-245 of the city code. So really, the way it is currently written, it does, the plain language certainly does indicate that the use can be lost if the registration, the regulatory license lapses. Is, I'm sorry, excuse me, is revoked. So I would like to see that continued in our zoning ordinance, that it's not there. Now, there was a comment about the governing has moved from zoning to regulatory. The regulatory actually is very similar to the current regulatory. And I think this, my concern is that people think that because of the current ordinances being deleted, that their use is gone. And I had requested this, that there be a definition for short-term rental, nonconform, lawfully nonconforming, so that it was clear that it was a continued use in the zoning ordinance and that the activity was regulated in the code of ordinance. Because we've heard a lot of discussion about vested rights and licensing, but the vested rights really tend to go with the use of the land, not with the regulatory. And I think there's some confusion. And one area that I would definitely want clarification is with regard to the transfer of the license. that I would definitely want clarification is with regard to the transfer of the license. I think that there is not a defined time period in which that is. I know in a previous version, we had looked at 60 days, I had requested 30 days. I know sometimes people are extremely compliant and do it right away, Kelly, right? And then others are a little more slow at it, and technically, the, the license is no longer valid if the current owner doesn't have a license. So I would like that clarified. And I was just curious, why is the 2130, 2131 being deleted as opposed to repeal? I mean, this is more legal, but does that allow, I'll just let you answer.
Regardless of whether the language repealed or deleted is used, it's, the effect is the same. That provision would no longer exist.
And so for the, and we've discussed this before, but, but not at this forum, for the lawful compliance, and I think also one area where people get confused is, the unlawful part applies to once the ordinance is changed and it's no longer allowed in the zoning district. It needs to be lawfully existing at that time to then become lawfully nonconforming under the new ordinance. You know, it wouldn't have nonconformity now with the zoning ordinance for short-term rentals.
That's true of any land use.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I actually have a question about that. To your original point, like, we should keep in these old, or refer back to the old ordinances what would be repealed. I find that to be really confusing. There's been a number of ordinance changes over the years where uses have changed from what they originally were, and quite honestly, it's a great example of it, is the tire place on the corner. You no longer can have a tire or repair, car repair shop in your central business district, but we don't refer back to it. That has been an established zoning use from that time that has been continuous, but we don't continually refer it back to in that, in that district. So I'm a little cautious about putting back a, a definition for an ordinance that's, that's being repealed. By its very definition, of not complying with the definition now, it would be considered a, a lawful conforming use if it meets those criteria set in the zoning ordinance.
So, again, I repeat, I think from comments that we have been getting, that there is a lack of clarity in the current version about just exactly what someone with a current lawful short-term rental property use will maintain in here. So if you don't like my proposals, I suggest something else, but in speaking with other people, it, it seemed warranted, especially in light of comments that we're getting, to clarify exactly what is a business short-term rental and a personal short-term rental going to become. And even with the staff notes, I don't think that that's clear. So, I'm just going to go through. So on page 33, with lodging unit, so there's a deletion from that, and I believe with the definite, the current definition of short-term rental, that prevents a home from being rented just one night. Well, actually, you actually have to combine the zoning ordinance with the code of ordinance, such that, so, any home rented for less than 28 days is a, a use, and as it currently is now, short-term rentals is from two to 28 days. The personal has six-term limitation, the business has no term limitation. Just trying to appreciate what the change to the definition of lodging unit does to that. Does, is that then allowing someone to rent their home for one night? Or would the regulatory ordinance prevent that?
Honestly, the lodging unit is one of those definitions that.
No, what I'm saying, because you remove the residential dwelling unit, period.
Right, and the goal there was to provide clarity so that there's no confusion that a lodging unit is a short-term rental, but if you look at, if you Ctrl+F, and the zoning ordinance lodging unit is used, I think, three times, three or five times, one of them being in the definition, it's just one of those terms that I think probably if the planning commission looked at it, that you guys would probably end up deleting it.
No, but what I'm getting at is, the removal of this phrase is not allowing someone to rent their home for one day, because I believe through the regulatory ordinance, a two-night stay for short-term rentals is the minimum number of stays.
Right, the goal was to delete that out of there so that nobody tried to think that short-term rentals had anything to do with lodging units.
Okay. And for the deletion of many of the terms in the S, how is that going to work with, and the deletion of 2130, 2131, with the continuation of the Article 10, Chapter 10? Because those terms are potentially used in that Article 10, Chapter 10. So I'm, I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just saying, are we sure we want to delete all of those terms in light of continuing Article 10, Chapter 10?
I think the proposed, I think it's a good question to raise, but the way the change is being made on the licensing side is essentially, it's, if you are registered, you can get reregistered up to a certain amount of time, so the, it's, the definitions aren't really relevant. The question is, were you registered or not?
Okay.
I, I don't think it makes, I don't think it hurts you on the licensing side to go in and delete these definitions out of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I, I do prefer to leave the short-term rental term in, because terms of short-term rental are discussed, especially for the overlay district, so I would caution deleting that term. I should say that definition to avoid confusion of term. For page 41, for the zoning compliance determination, the description includes, you know, having it according to the procedures established in this ordinance, and I was unaware of any procedures in the ordinance.
The procedures are when it's required by another ordinance, but based off Andy's comments from Williams &amp; Works, I concur with his suggestion, modifications to that definition.
So we will be seeing updates to that.
Assuming, if that's what the planning commission wants, we're here to give you what you want, so if, if that's what you want, we can come back at the revised version, incorporating the changes proposed by Andy's, Andy by, with which I concur, we're happy to do that.
And I think that was a good catch by them, and with you also agreeing to that, to me, is two checkmarks.
Yeah, I, I got it, I just didn't have time to really look at it. I had identified it on my own, but I am open to modification. On pages 55 to 56, for the one use on a lot, so I know that we were really looking at this to allow a dwelling unit that is somebody's principal residence to also be a commercial short-term rental. I would, I'm still concerned that it's not as clear as it could be, especially with some of the, let me see, wait. No, I think I have the wrong page down there. It's for 2103, section.
It's page 56, Mary.
Okay.
2103 is on 56.
Oh, there we go. Yep, yep. Is exactly how do attached condos come in, and especially when attached condos have been identified as duplexes, and detached cottages have become, have been identified as attached condos. So I would like to see, I don't know if it's necessarily in the zoning ordinance, but definitely in the guidelines that would be provided. And then next, on page 60, so when I was looking through this, I noticed that through the recodification for the nonconformity, we used to have 60%, so under D, excuse me, that, you know, if it, if it were greater than 60%, they could replace it, and this has been increased to 75%, which allows, I think has an impact on it, and I was just wondering about moving it back to 60%. Does anyone recall why it was changed to 75% from 60%?
Larry, we talked about this during the committee, and my, my belief was that the, the 60% was seen as aggressively low.
So 75% actually is making it more difficult, or less difficult. That's why I just want to make sure that I understand what. So when you say aggressively low, do you mean too much was getting rebuilt?
Too easy to redevelop without coming into full compliance.
See, because I thought 60% is lower, so if the total value was 60%, then it had to come up to the current ordinance. So it would address more, more would fall into having to come up to the current ordinance.
What did you want, Mary?
So I was just wondering if we shouldn't go back to 60%.
Did George disagree with you?
This was identified as I was looking at things, so this was not discussed in the, the work group. I noticed it, and it was not identified as a substantive change in the recodification, and it's in a, in a section that we're dealing with, and.
Well, just tell them what you want, to your ordinance.
I take a personal point of order with that one, Chairman.
Well, you shouldn't. I'm just saying, if you want 60%, say you want 60%, none of us are going to argue with you.
Oh, okay. I would like that moved back down to 60%, so that if 60% is destroyed, it has, when it comes back, it has to be brought into fully compliance. If, if I'm reading it correctly, I think I am. I think 75% allows more to be built without having to come up to compliance. Yeah. And seeing what happened on Oak Street with the overbuild of the, the rebuild of the destroyed cooking kitchen, I think 60% is more appropriate. So I would move to change the 75 to 60, back to 60. And.
I think that was, this contrary to newer thinking about nonconformity, that would allow, particularly in the context of affordable housing, or nonconforming businesses, that would allow property owners to rebuild what they had. That was the discussion at the committee. It's to all properties, not just STRs.
No, I understand that, but it's coming up to compliance with the current ordinance. That's when it, that's what triggers it. So it's not that they cannot rebuild, it's just when they rebuild, they have to meet the current ordinance.
So the 60% would be applied to all properties and all.
Right.
No matter what?
Yep.
I, not sure if that's necessarily a change we should be looking at.
Well, no, so.
Because this is, this is something that's going to change all properties and all conformities, correct?
Well, and as I said, Commissioner Gruber, this was changed in the recodification. I see this as a substantive change that was not identified as a substantive change. I just happened to find it as I'm looking through, because it's in this ordinance, and this ordinance is being revised, so we should take advantage of putting it back to where it was, considering the planning commission and the city council were not informed of this change from the original. And I tried to find every single change, and I obviously missed one until I looked at, was looking at this.
Mary, can I make up a point, though? Our agenda item is short-term rental workshop ordinances discussion. Like, I don't, I, I see what your point is, but I think we have to bring it to a different meeting under a different, you know, point of, an action item.
Well, I think.
In order to do that, right?
Well, not necessarily, because I think this has the biggest impact for short-term rentals in residential districts where they are no longer allowed. So I think, and considering that over 20% of our, of our housing stock is a short-term rental, I think that is significant.
I don't know, I, I moved to chair. What's, what's your thoughts there? Can we do this under a discussion item?
Well, it's what changes we would like, I'm sorry.
The way I understand it, city council sent us a document, they figure it's 80% complete, and hope to have it completed by the time of our next meeting. And, and that's where I had mentioned, Mary, if that's what she wants in it, just put it in it, because it's still a draft. And for us to even comment or change anything, I think it's a complete waste of time, because at the next council meeting, they could change it back to the original form, and it's, it's kind of backwards on how we're doing this, this time around. So it's, it's difficult to see the, you know, point A, point B, point C. We're kind of going point A to point D, and then back to C.
Well, if that were the case, then, shouldn't we, shouldn't we just let council discuss and bring those changes forward, then?
Yes, but that's not what was asked of us.
Well, what I meant was, Mary does have the unique opportunity to be able to do that at council, or with, in the, the.
And, you're right, and it is possible, maybe, I don't know what the dynamics of the special work group were, but maybe there's something George disagreed with, and they were at odds, and Mary could say now, well, I want this in there when George was against it. I don't know.
Well, as I said, this was not discussed at the work group, and I had not realized it until looking through the draft, and realizing that more than 20% of our housing stock is short-term rental, and allowing it to build back without compliance to the current ordinance, I believe that this is something significant. We had discussed the, both ordinances on the 17th, and there were amendments.
Hey, Mary, I don't mean to cut you off, but do you have quite a few items?
Nope, nope.
Because what I was going to suggest is you can just maybe do a synopsis of them, and we'll do, without objection, we'll just say they're included in being made into the draft, and for discussion at our next meeting. That'd be fine with me, I don't know if.
I wouldn't say that we would want them in the draft. These are things that are discussed. These were things that were discussed.
Yeah. No, I just.
I think, I think you made a good point, and we should remember that I think the direction from city council was that planning would. from City Council was that planning would do an expeditious review of this. And should we be really dwelling on all the details, the nuts and bolts of this, or should this be somewhat high level and move on?
Yeah, it's not, it's not our document.
And, and yeah, it's probably not realistic to think that in the meeting on the 17th, City Council is going to go through, whatever the process is, amendments and tweaks and what have you, and get to an endpoint on this whole thing.
Well, at the Septa, at the February 17th meeting, it was decided to put this through, and that amendments could be discussed at Planning Commission. Because then Planning Commission could decide what they wanted. And, you know, Chairman, you do make an excellent point. As I said, I do agree. At the time it came out of the work group, there was an opinion that it was at 80 percent. Based on some of my comments, I'm not, I, I, even at the February 17th meeting, I had indicated it was not at 80 percent. And if the Planning Commission feels that more work or more guidance is warranted by City Council, then you should request that. If you believe you can put things through, you can request that also. The expeditious meant that we would be appreciative if it's on your docket and you put it through. You were there and asked for clarification yourself. So, I mean, you heard the discussion and about proposed amendments, so...
We already know we can't put a short-term rental ordinance through, so we're just going with what council wants to happen. For me, any comments, pretty mundane, but... I wish I didn't know when the City Council was going to go a whole different direction, and we wouldn't have had to review and spend time on an ordinance we'd been working on and gathering public input for years. And, you know, it's six, seven years later, we still don't have the long-term rental, where even the fire inspection's done. The townships do, we don't, not the city. I'm usually pretty good at retention and comprehension of anything we read, but I gotta tell you, there's been so many drafts at this point. It reminds me of reading Chaucer's Canterbury Tales or Beowulf in Old English. And, and they're starting to meld in my mind one ordinance to the next, and it's disheartening. With this new ordinance, one, the one problem I do have, a lot of the things in there I know have been vetted in prior meetings, but yet they're included in this ordinance, and that's unfortunate. My main problem with it is where items come back to the Planning Commission for approval. I think that's ridiculous. And then lastly, and this really isn't a Planning Commission concern, I know what it's been costing the city for the other ordinance. Has any work been done on this to, how much it's going to cost to carry out this ordinance going forward?
I was going to ask that.
And you may not have an answer, but I'm just, it's got to cost a hell of a lot more.
Well, there's a number of thoughts that we're looking at, and there is going to be, in my mind, some, some additional fees. I mean, zoning compliance determination is going to be pretty fact-based. So I, I don't know everything just now. I mean, I think, I know that the licensure, the licensing ordinance does kind of postulate there would be a breathing room to kind of set up a new administration, and that's going to be some of the fees. I know that council's going to want to look at those fees because we, we don't want to dip into the general fund for this, but we also can't collect too much money. So there, we're trying to find, well, the Goldilocks zone of how much the fees should be for the administration of this ordinance.
Okay, now, I don't, unless there's more discussion, I guess we can just... Do you want to see it again, or do you want to do the public hearing on April 10th for whatever the next draft comes?
I have a question, Tim. All of the discussion that happened around the table, that really what they're looking for is our bottom line if we want to move forward, as you said, and have the public review. Is that it?
Yeah.
It's not that we're bringing all of that, all of this discussion back to them. We've had the discussion among ourselves, and then, I suppose, individually you'll go around and, and will vote on it. And not necessarily the discussion, but do we agree that it should go out for public, is it ready to go out for a public hearing? Is that about it?
I guess so, yes, yes.
I just want to make it clear what's, what they'll see and what can be.
We were tasked with being expeditious. I was sitting next to Bob at the meeting, and I, I was afforded a minute by the mayor to come back up and ask exactly what expeditions meant because I thought we might be having some special meetings because we only meet once a month, and council meets twice, and sometimes we're before them or after them on the first week of the, the month. But, um, yeah, I, you're correct, it could come back again with some revisions, but it'll be holding it up.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And it's really not our document.
No.
Whatever you want to do, you can choose to make a motion that it return or that it, we move forward to a public hearing on April 10th. Unless you want to discuss some more, and it's nine o'clock.
I make a mo, I make a motion that we move this forward to, to City Council so they can have a public meeting, a hearing.
Well, it'd be our, our, our public hearing. They'll have to do one, too.
Oh, okay.
April 10th.
April 10th?
So Janice made a motion that this document be at our next meeting, and a public hearing be held on April 10th. Was there support?
Support.
Clark, question?
So this document, or, because this was in 80 percent, are we going to get a 100 percent document?
I doubt it. I don't know. Never. This document will never be done.
I'm 95, but, I mean, and that's a realistic question, and I'll, I'll let Mary, because it'll, it'll ultimately roll around council, then come back to us. Will we get a good document that we can put forward?
My assumption, when I watched some of the meetings as, as well, is that they were going to bring it back to us, we were going to take a look at it and have this discussion that we are, but they want to continue to move forward with it. And so I thought that they may or may not incorporate some of the discussions if you heard at previous meetings or at public comment time, or they may consider all of the things, and they are going to incorporate what they want. And then City Council is going to put that piece out. We weren't supposed to necessarily create or make any additions or corrections to it. We were just to comment on it and say, should it go forward?
And I would just want to know if it's going to be ready for us so we can do that, because we do serve council.
Well, Chairman? I would ask Kelly or Kate, Dave. I mean, at City Council, we had discussed potential amendments to it. So should we take this discussion back to City Council with proposed drafts, changes? You know, what's the better process to ensure that the public hearing is productive? I mean, doesn't, would not have to be redone because some, there have been some requested changes. And can those changes be done? And how does that affect a public hearing, which would then go to City Council?
So changes can be made to the document at this point. The, any changes that this group wants to make can be made and included in the next packet and noticed for the public hearing. And that document can be voted on and recommended to council, or not.
But I, I would add, too, I would think, and for myself, I'm actually afraid to make changes to this because I think they'd all get done at the next, undone at the next council meeting.
I was going to say the same thing. Like, are we wasting our time? I mean, because really, we, we sent forth a document we worked four months on that no one even acknowledged until we had to force them to acknowledge that they had gotten it. Instead, you came up with your own, and, and obviously that's what they want. So why are we doing this? It's my big question.
Anyway, we do have a motion on the floor, and I think, I think from my standpoint, it would be this document we have in front of us as it currently sits, that would be noticed. And if something is done between now and our meeting, it'd be a separate sheet of paper.
This document is surely going to get changed, and maybe significantly, by council on March 17th, and again on April, whatever that first meeting is. So the, the document ultimately isn't going to look, well, it's going to be, I'm guessing, significantly changed from this.
So the City Council is working with, the City Council's working with the regulatory code right now. They're not taking up the zoning ordinance right at the next meeting.
Good point.
The City Council has charged you all with your statutory obligation to review the existing ordinance. Should you like to make any changes, proposed changes, we can incorporate that, and that's what you can review at a public clearing, hearing. Of course, as it's sent up, they can up, down, or modify as they, as they deem fit. And just as a clarification, the public hearing will be held at, for our zoning ordinance at the, at the Planning Commission. We're not going to be holding zoning ordinance, public hearings at the City Council. We're going to leave those for just regulatory, as a, just a clarification point.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none?
Excuse me, so, so what is the motion for?
Set a public hearing for April 10th.
For the existing document or for the document that we're changing?
Janice didn't specify.
Well, that can be up for discussion, I mean...
Do you want to amend Janice's motion?
Ah, yes, I'd like to amend it to say, for the document updated for the discussion items mentioned at this meeting.
Support.
Okay, it's removed and supported. Any discussion?
So that'll be a, a new document, or the document they really want us, the 100 percent, 95 percent?
The latest draft is what you're saying.
The latest, the latest draft that includes what we believe, based on what Kate said, should be included, which they can go up or down.
So I'm just making those changes that Williams and Works recommended that I concurred with. Those are the changes that are being made to the document in preparation for the public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Chair? I want to make sure I'm doing this right.
Whatever Mary had indicated pretty much is, because she was on that committee that drafted it, we're really not changing anything that I've understood. And the Williams and Works recommendation, I, I don't think there's any objection to it here.
Okay, was there other changes in addition to that?
Well, I got a million, but I'm not going to do them.
That I make, that I, that I'm being asked to make. What, I just want to make sure I'm clear in terms of what you're telling me to do.
Yeah, you're doing Williams and Works and whatever Mary had wanted.
Well, we didn't, that was all, we...
She's still drafting it. She's on the committee.
I can verify to you that I did not suggest any changes, and it might be useful if others confirm, so you know.
Yeah, I'd like to know what those are, those changes are.
All right, so if we want to know what those are, then the vote would be no for his amendment. There would be a separate document, whatever is changed. Yes? Is everybody on board? Is there any confused?
Are we looking for an A and a B?
I guess I, as I was taking notes of your conversation, what I understand is that add the special land use conditions from Andy Moore. There was some, a modification to section 2305 about the 60 percent versus 75 percent. And then I did have a question, at least I'm not sure about the attached, detached multifamily homes in the same parcel or one use per parcel. Those are the notes that I took on your discussion, so I'm not sure what you all are looking for changes, but Dave here likes to do a good job, and he needs some, some clarification.
I don't think any of us are really looking for any changes. What we're saying is what's in front of us right now.
And the Williams and Work suggestion by both Williams Work and the lawyer, I think is a, like I said, those are two green checkmarks to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But that's the black text document. Anything that changes after tonight would be the red line, is the way I understand it. Because that would be the document that goes to the public hearing.
Yeah, we typically will do a red line just showing changes from the document presented tonight to the next one, so if that's what you're looking for.
And the intent would be to have the public hearing that, and would it be helpful if I read what Williams and Works suggestions were, just so we're all on the same page?
No, no.
So just, I would incorporate those, those would show in red line, and that would be the document that the public hearing is on? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But...
That's correct.
But leaving special land use or... I'm trying to remember all the things that were in it.
I would not, excuse me, based, based off the conversation today, I would not be changing that in the draft that goes to the public hearing. Of course, Planning Commission is more than welcome to make a recommendation that, you know, this be changed to something else, and we could even put together a draft of what that change could look like if the Planning Commission desires.
I don't think you're going to get us to do much more on this.
When is your April meeting?
April 10th.
Okay.
So I'll make the, those few minor changes, and then show it in red line, and that'll be the document that the public hearing's on, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what your motion is, correct?
That's what my amendment would be if the group agrees.
Yep, correct. All right. All in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
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 All opposed, most carries, and then the amended motion is for April 10th, a public hearing, and we'll do a roll call.
Gruber?
Yes.
Heinig?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Varney?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Stagman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Hopefully, in future things, it'll be a little smoother. Okay. Uh, commission member and staff comments, staff comments. Uh, I will defer to the city managers here, so she gets to go first.
No comment. It's nice to see you all again.
Yeah, old time. Kelly?
Thanks. Just a reminder, the, the next meeting is the second Thursday, April 10th, and it's looking like a busy meeting. We'll have a public hearing on short-term rentals, and the master plan will be back on the agenda next month.
On the master plan, what percentage are we complete on that, would you estimate?
I think that's going to depend on all of you. I will have a, what the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission would perceive to be a pretty completed document, like a 90 percent complete document to send to you.
That's what I would think as well.
Yes.
So that should be the last meeting, hopefully, correct?
Yes, and Becca will be here, and she will give a short presentation just about the document and next steps, and we can go from there.
Okay, excellent. All right, where'd we start last month? I forget.
I don't know, I wasn't here.
Yeah? All right, let's go, Eddie, we're going to start with you, and then we'll go that way.
I had the feeling I was going to go first. Mr. Chairman, I would like the permission to be respectfully self-critical of us as a commission.
Okay.
Okay? I'm the newest member on the commission, and I feel it's appropriate that I listen and try to get an understanding of the issues that are being discussed, the decisions that need to be made, changes that need to be made, and ordinances and everything. So I really listen intently and respectfully to each of the commissioners. What I do hear a lot that I have a concern about is when, when we're trying to make a case, a state of fact, it's hard to buy in when you say, "I think," and make your point. What that tells me is that there, you don't have a sufficient basis based on fact or obvi- What that tells me is that there, you don't have a sufficient basis based on fact, or objectivity, or really understanding the need to make the change. So we should be careful about making a statement or making a case of what we want to make a change, by saying, I think. And I hear that quite often.
All right.
That's my, that's my statement.
I'm going to try and say, I know, every time now.
Okay, I understand, you know, okay. It is just something I think we should be cautious of, because it does lessen the impact of what you're saying, and the fact that you're not presenting enough factual basis to support your position.
Very good point.
Tough act to follow, thanks.
Well, I can tell you what to say.
Okay, good, you tell me what to say, we'll be all set. All right, so tonight, um, I'm, I'm, first of all, thank you for excusing me last, we, last month, because I, we, yeah, we had the flu, and nobody wanted it, so we could not be here, and I was not able to give my comments regarding the meeting last time, and so I'm going to step back a month, if you guys will, will bear with me. I, um, am definitely certain that whatever we send up tonight, and whatever we've been sent to work on, doesn't really matter. I think that, I, I am, see, I did it, didn't I? I feel that, um, city council has ignored all of our work to this point, and forcing us to put a, um, a, a, something on the agenda to recognize our work is, um, really, really tough for me to take. I think we are better than that, I think as a, this commission, we work pretty decently together, believe it or not. We argue, we fight, I still miss Mike Neese, he was my favorite one to fight with, but, um, we do, we do the work that we are asked to, and for it to not be recognized is unprofessional, and that's my thought on that. I really hope that this time, we're going to send something to them, and they are going to hear from Mary our comments, and Mary's not going to just put her comments forward, I want you to represent us. I want to hear what we've talked about come out of your mouth, because that's what George did for us, all the time. And he, we, we asked him all the time, what is city council thinking? I don't see us having that relationship yet, so I think if you give and we give, we might actually be able to get somewhere with this. Enough of my soapbox. Um, thank you, guys, and that's it, I'm going to be done before I keep going and say the same thing.
Don't forget to set your clock forward Saturday.
That's depressing.
That's my only comment.
Sunday or Saturday?
Saturday, Sunday, Sunday morning, Saturday, if you, if you want to get up.
Whatever you want.
Yeah.
Is it?
That's all I have.
All right, Mike?
No comment.
Mary?
Um, just wish the South Haven Public School students good luck. I know the history club has competition this weekend, I know the robotics are gearing up, and ironically, same time is the rule breakers at our local theater, so, wish them all good luck.
And Chicago, it's coming up, they're doing Chicago at, at the high school. Teen version, clean version.
Um, I do want to thank the staff, and, uh, all those who assist our staff, uh, through this rather lengthy, short-term rental saga that we have been in, and everybody is working very diligently on it, and has put their best effort into it. And I do appreciate, um, not only the council members, um, work on it, but certainly, everybody around this table, and, um, I, and staff in particular, because they're the ones that get, keep getting bombarded with things, and have to put it back together again. So, and, and the citizens who came to talk to us, and let us know what they're thinking. It's been a long haul for this community, but I think we'll come out of it the better for it, and I do thank everybody for their contributions.
Yeah, it's been a heavy load, and a long time, as you've said, uh, but, uh, well done. We've argued it through, and hopefully, we're getting near the end, at least of this version. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The short-term, the short-term rental, the separation of this, the code of ordinances and zoning, I don't think we, we needed it. And also, I think it's a good plan. I do. The only thing I'm, I'm, I'm still struggling with, when I, when I look at it from the overall, is the non-conforming and a potential of the takings. And, and I think that the legal team has done a really nice job, if you've watched the council meetings, really talking about mitigation of risk, and a good understanding of what's in front of city council, it's pretty big. And, and on tonight, it was talked a little bit about, you know, the cost of implementing the new program. I don't know what kind of risk analysis has been developed for any potential budget changes with regards to funding some particular issue that could happen, if we have some takings. MML is not going to be behind us on this one, it's going to be up to us, so I'm not sure if we're developing a risk budget that way, or looking at something, but it, that's, I think, the only scary part that I see in this. Otherwise, a lot of the, the items are very equal to what we have currently separating things out, like I said. I don't think we needed it, but I think it's a good plan, I, I, I think we're going to get through it. That takings portion is the scary part, and I still haven't got a good handle on it.
Kelly, question for you, there's, was it nineteen percent of the housing stock is short-term rental?
That's what I've been told tonight.
And of that, um, second homeownership is forty-nine percent?
I don't have that in front of me, sorry.
Okay, do you know Kate?
I don't.
So I just, excuse me, I was just wondering if, if, um, this, if the forty-nine percent is on top of the nineteen percent, or if it's part of it? Was, was going to be my question.
Yeah, it's kind of like an if-then, i- it's, it's not necessarily, my understanding is that, if you're looking for second homeownership, obviously, you're looking to see how much, or if any of a personal residence exemption is being claimed. But not every home that is a second home, or doesn't have the P R E, is a short-term rental. But not every short-term rental is a, uh, they can be a hundred percent P R E as well. Some people have those licenses and may not use them, they, they carry them.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's no good real defining line at this point.
Part of the point is, with half the housing stock is a second home, you can't do this, but it'd be interesting to say, you need to live in that dwelling eighty percent of the time, then you'd have neighbors. All right, um, little quick thing, Janice was, and I were talking before the meeting tonight, and bakery was a concern, how it's gone, and it reminded me, you know, people say, well, why do you like South Haven? And, and things like the bakery, if you got up early enough in the morning, you could smell the doughnuts, right? And I don't know if anybody remembered the Colonial, across from the Michigan Central Depot, for the South Haven Kelmazoo Railroad Branch? Used to be McGuire's Coffee, and they would grind the coffee there, and you would get the aroma all through town. And that's the east side of the bridge, and if you walked to the west side of the bridge, you had Jensen's, and they were smoking the salmon, the trout, the chubs, and the shrimp. You know, and sometimes you can associate the smells, you know, with your, with a place, and it's quite pleasant. Another thing, there was, uh, by the pavilion, or the pavilion now, there was a store called Berenstain's. Anybody remember that one, Clark? Berenstain's Candy, wholesale candy. So they supplied all the little stores and gas stations in town, and if you were a smart youngster, you and your friends would pull your money and go buy a whole box of candy at wholesale, instead of buying at retail. And, which also reminded me, when I was going to St. Basil's, we would, uh, use the, um, Monroe Park quite a bit. And on the way to Monroe Park, there was a little grocery store called Maple Street Grocery, where we'd buy candy at. And, does anybody know who Wilbur Ingraham was?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. So, if you've been in South Haven a while, I mean, he by, he passed away in nineteen ninety-nine. He was a long-term city councilman, and I think probably the longest-serving county commissioner, where Gail Patterson does now, I think, I think he served the longest amount of time. And, I wanted to bring this up, because the other night, at the council meeting, I heard somebody that spoke the public comment, and referred to Pleasant View by another name. And I thought it pretty unfortunate that the city council is kind of ganged up on that person. Instead of just saying, you know, we, we try not to refer to it as that anymore, it's, you know, this area, it's just Pleasant View. But historically, you would say, well, why was it referred to by that four-letter name? And I think, you know, coming out of the sixties, it was a drug culture, and early seventies, and Vietnam was just ending, and there were all the factories there, and Elkenburg Park became an area where a lot of drugs were sold. And it wasn't called the Zone, it was called the Drug Zone. And it was shortened later to the Zone, and that went from the seventies to the eighties, all the way into the nineties. And, I think it's important to know where, historically, why certain things were named the, what they were, or had a, um, I don't know, a nickname, I guess you could say. And, the reason I mentioned Wilbur Ingraham, and his Maple Street Grocery, and I remember his wife as a little kid. Unfortunately, a guy named Ron Wilson, and another guy named Edwin Lamar Langston, went in there in nineteen seventy-six, and shot her dead, Wilbur's wife.
That is correct.
Because they wanted drug money, is the way I understood it, and what I read in the paper. And up until recently, I mean, not just five years ago, uh, was, um, I think it was a Sutton girl who shot a, uh, the Newell boy, right there. So, yes, we want to call it Pleasant View, but sometimes the stigma remains, and to this day, there's still problems in that area. We've had to have a police station there. So I think before everybody got on the back of the person and said, hey, they're just degradating an ethnic group in the area, you have to understand where the name came from. It wasn't because of who lived in the area, it was because of what was being done at the park. And I can tell you, growing up on the river, in the, in the, um, eighties, like with Miami Vice, the cigarette boats used to come in at two or three o'clock in the morning, right down by, um, what was the Channel One restaurant? And they'd throw off duffel bags, car'd get there, and they'd speed away, and the speedboat would go out. You know? And with sweat team, and a lot of law enforcement, a lot of that has come to an end in South Haven, which I think is very good. So, it's just a little history, I think, like I said, instead of everybody jumping on that poor lady for a term she used, because obviously, she grew up here, spent a lot of time here over the decades. She wasn't a recent transplant, that I think maybe a little slack should be given, and just say, we want it to be called Pleasant View, and it's had an unfortunate past. So, that's my comment, thank you, and we'll adjourn.